My guy's ears perk up every time he hears another bark. He's, he's trying to figure out where it's coming from.
Hear it? I don't know what they're barking at. Deer, deer, like they've never seen a deer before, for God's sake.
But every deer is different, you know, they gotta bark at them just to make sure.
That's true.
My two are the same.
Look at them.
We're live. So it's starting to be six thirty-five, Green County Planning Board. On YouTube Live, I'm going to also try to share PowerPoint, so I'm not. Going to be able to, well, I'll see you on site, but like again, we did a previous Zoom meetings. If you make motion or comment you want recorded of some sort, just please identify. I know most of your voices by now, electronic voices, so, but just in case, well, it all has. So, uh, let's see, uh, everybody you guys hopefully has a copy of the agenda we just sent out. Of funds most recently this afternoon, as well as this PowerPoint, so if you're able to pull up the PowerPoint. As we go through it, that would be helpful in terms of doing the referrals and so forth. I did not print a copy of our open for the roll call, so I'm going to go through that just in case. Uh, let me just check. Let me move to the waiting room. I'm not sure why there's a waiting room. I must press some waiting room button. Alright, uh. Alright, the August eighteenth minutes, I don't know if anybody, uh, I did not print a copy, but I did send them around the email. Comments on the.
Did I miss a roll call?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, um, so I was gonna do the roll call first, if you have your rights. You didn't listen because it didn't happen. Anthony Pollak. Nancy? Nancy on Zoom? No? Jensen?
I'm here.
Mitchell? Bruce said he couldn't make it. Bob is here. Kylie?
Here.
Bud is here. Doug?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Jen is here. Jane?
Here.
Jim?
Yes, here.
McGonigal? Tom Volker? So we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, eleven people. We have eight points. Some, uh, minutes. If anybody has any comments, if there's questions about the minutes. August eighteenth. Okay, uh, Bud made a motion and he seconded.
Cindy, I'll move that we accept the minutes.
Okay, well, yeah, uh, maybe people are here, maybe we'll need to speak up a little bit more, or I don't know if you want to. Can you see us all okay, in the room?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. Alright, all in favor? I, I.
Aye.
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 Looks like we're getting pop-up weather of a certain sort. Okay, uh, what, what happened? That was going on. Weird advice, that, it's, I don't wanna share that part.
Just X that out.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of adopting the August eighteenth minutes?
Aye.
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 No, Jane, Jill, okay. Planning Department reports, uh, there's a few things I have, uh, just as you know, um. We are able to do remote meetings again, we can talk about that a little bit more if we want. When, when this new law was enacted a couple of weeks ago. The decision here by Warren, uh, our director was, you know, we could do a hybrid. So that people wanted to do Zoom or they wanted to come in, so hence the hybrid. What works. The, and in terms of the hybrid, this is open to the public, if somebody wanted to come to the meeting. They are being recorded on therapy broadcast on YouTube and are, uh, watch on YouTube. However, public cannot participate remotely, they would need to come in to. No people to go participate in the meeting. I got advice for your local boards as well, just so you probably know. Another thing, just to let the board know.
Wait, wait, wait. So we are public hearing now. Like next month. People from the public cannot participate.
That's up to you.
Oh, okay. I thought that was the guy.
Well, no, that's kind of the way we, kind of the way the county, you have to make them open to the public. When we were doing strictly Zoom.
Yeah.
The public couldn't really participate. It was just, they could watch on YouTube, but they couldn't really participate, meaning share the Zoom. Different government organization.
But if they can decide we wanna share the Zoom, like.
Right, and some people won't do that, just. Yeah, but, but you also wanna like, in terms of letting people in and how you manage that, that's really up to you. You have to be careful with this.
Oh, yeah. We didn't have a good experience. We, well, any of these, you know, short term, that's all. So we had all these strangers coming in and saying.
Right, from who knows, from who knows where. Right, or visitors, or maybe I do have a second home in Lexington. So that's, and that is why, you know, we're doing it this way now. Somebody from locally wanted to come to the meeting, they could. The only request we had from the strictly Zoom was, oh, we have a public podcast. That's, you know. Soul best to be included. Never, at all the time, we just did strictly Zoom, knowing the public.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's really. Yeah, you have to make it available to the public.
Yeah. But, but for a while, we couldn't do it, I knew it all.
Well, then it was, yeah, for a while it was just in person.
But now it's back.
Back to electronically because. Okay, the only, um, another thing is, I just want to make the board aware of that the Ag District Request for Inclusion. Period is from October first. Put out public notices, public notices, the consent of village clerks and town clerks, um, post offices and so forth proposed. From October first to October thirty, if anybody who wants to request to be part of agricultural district number one. Less than inclusion, um, to have their parcel. And it's pretty open in terms of whether, you know, how that's decided. And there's an Ag and Farm Board that the request, though, go to, and, and you know, the final number, meeting will be a public. Hearing about it as well in December, so, um, there's a process for it. And right now, we have exact numbers, well, eight hundred parcels in the county that are part of the Ag District, over forty thousand acres. And the basic premise of, it gives people protection against the use of suits, basically, is what the premise is that. County has a right to farm, but it really helps support it. So I just wanted to let you know that that process. Let's see, the next thing, uh, before we get into the referrals, uh. The Planning Achievement Awards. Where, um, we have four nominations that are unsubmitted. Orland, which is just right across the street here, old historic building that has been renovated into a mix of arts and restaurants. Egres and so forth, uh, and it's been, uh, nominated by Bank of Green County Charitable Foundation. Who, one of their board members is also on our economic planning board. Durham Connect is a community group in Durham. That's, um. Nominated by Patricia Handle, who's a Green County legislator for their work in, um. Implementing the plans and then helping out some broadband studies and some broadband work. When I have to get this more specific information from Patricia, if, if the planning board decides to. Then I just need to support specific, uh, who, who should have the work, because you just put town board and citizens in Durham, so. We can't have a whole type of, so we definitely need to be more specifics. Uh, Carol Doudoulin Foundation, which was nominated by Bill Lawrence, now they received an award in, um. Just two years, three years ago, two thousand eighteen, so it's a very similar award. So just, um. I just want to make the board aware of that, uh, with that, I guess, a couple of different things since two thousand eighteen. Primarily, they, they acquired two, um, buildings and then renovated. One in, uh, Carol Garage. Two, a physical therapy practice and a pocket park next to that. And with the Carol Bears Art Project, I think it was just last weekend. And the same people have nominated the chair, St. Anna, the knot, I don't say her name right, and Sherry True. So they did just get an award in two thousand eighteen, but they've nominated. And then the last one is Wyndham Matter, um, which just has some bullet points on, not all that familiar. But, uh, this is a, a. Facility that's been renovated, um. Four overnight, twenty, twenty-four overnight, uh, twelve private bedrooms, onsite gyms, spa, kitchen. Barn. All of the three hundred guests, wedding menus, dancing, so, um, they've been nominated. Of the community improvement, I guess a lot of improvements they made with the, with the planning board and the past years. Forty-five day event property, called, called, mentioned, called bedroom. So, and, uh, so, uh, what I like about it is there's one in the River towns, there's two from the valley, and one from Mount Topps. So, uh, that is the slate, so, um, my understanding is the, the board discusses and decides. Whether, or if you have any other thoughts on whether the words and whether you wanna give these four nominations award. Up to the planning board to decide, my understanding of that process works.
Rich, what is that number one, Forland, again? What is that?
I'll start fairly right, just right across the street from the county building on Water Street, it's an old historic structure. Uh, it's right on the creek, um, and it's been renovated over the past couple of years. It came before the planning board, uh, last year, um, and, uh, it's got a mix, it's got, um. Mix of arts kind of, uh, in it, and, uh, there's a small restaurant in there that's been very active already, Willis. So it's just, uh, Main Street revitalization, it's not on Main Street, it's right off of Main Street, and, uh, the nomination was, uh. There's the nominee that really, uh. Where is that right up? They found it was one of the best Main Street revitalization projects, uh. That village is empty.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't know if you're familiar with that building, talking about right on Water Street, right on the creek. It's right up basically on the corner right here, uh, Westbridge Street and Water Street, right along the creek. Already generated a lot of business, actually, the downside has been it's created a, a little bit of a traffic problem. And, and right across the street, there's this, cars parked everywhere, it's making Water Street all challenging to navigate. So, I mean, I guess it's a good thing, the use of building was already very popular, but, um. We know that they have done, and, yeah, there's a parking lot, like people just would park there, no sign, which is. So those are, I don't know how many tenants they have so far, I don't think they have even filled up their tenants. I know, like I said, one place that I visited, there's Willis, which is a little kind of eatery bakery, which has been very popular.
Can you typically select one, or receive the work?
They do, whether you, you, the choosing the whole, you know, you can go as whole slate, and pick and choose, as many. This is, in the past, this is, uh, first time we had four, and past two, we had three. Four. Yeah, the last. Again, Carol Doudoulin Foundation, uh, two, two thousand eighteen, the one that will be a repeat.
They're really good work, I think that they're doing the work, and absolutely.
I can trust the people, you know, I look at who's nominating, because I don't really know people. But if I, if I say, well, you know, the people that are nominated. Oh, yeah. Wanted to defer to those.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, I mean, two of them are county legislators. Bill Lawrence, who, who was nominated, Carol Doudoulin Foundation, Patricia Handle, uh, Durham Connect, and, um. County Supervisor, uh, Windham. I mean, as I learn more about the county, I haven't seen projects all the time, but I would like to see. So, you know, it's just. I went to, I went to summer, summer farm market recently, I left you on the farm market and, and.
Oh, in, yeah.
Yeah, a little, like, little, their, their little farm, uh, it's a great project, my foundation is working on. There's a lot of great projects out there. So there, um, but, uh, and, uh, the, the November, so by the way, I think this works, I think the presentations to them. I'll have to get in contact, like I said, I've got some labor to do as to. Getting in touch with them, letting them know they got an award, who should come and receive the award, making sure the legislators are, that are, that district are aware and so forth. So, November, I believe, set the November legislature, we, we have to present the awards. For Jim, Jim is the chair, that's, anybody, Jim, uh, has got, that's something. So, I, I think, you know, if somebody wants to move to accept the whole slate, or.
I would make an offer, because they also want very worthy projects.
Anybody want to stick to that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those?
Aye.
Any last thing to review? Okay. Alright, uh. So, on to the re, well, no, I wanna do the education training opportunities, because there's some new opportunities that have come up on training. Uh, the DOS has released the new schedule, so I'm gonna send these all around the email and so forth, but the. DOS came out with a new schedule, so there are some webinar. Some of the trainings are again now starting to take places, onsite workshops, so, um. And like, I think, the one Columbia County is putting together, which we usually work together on, I think they're considering doing it onsite, they haven't determined a location yet. So, uh, there's a mix right now, there are webinars and onsite, so, um, everybody posted about the. I don't know if it's an onsite training, um, or a, a. Webinar coming up, open by Livingston County, Lewis, Lewis County, uh, all on the DOS, uh, website. Some of the regional community commissions are doing, so, so, um, there's a good number of trainees. Out there, uh, coming up this fall, next couple of months, um, Dutchess County. Online, I didn't list them all, but the Southern Tier West, uh, planning and zoning, of all, because they have a number of good zoning. They have a couple of good webinars on new solar law and solar citing, so I encourage you to check out it. If you want to do some online training, um, the Southern Tier West, uh, series, they have some good training as well. Or, you know, share them with your local boards, well, I have an email list, but, uh, I just share with the local boards as well. I just want to run through these grant opportunities, again, September tenth deadline just passed for the Greenway, but there's another deadline on November eighth. Catskill Community Smart Growth Program, I, I told that they're going to have a full round of grants, but I haven't gotten the information. About, um, when they're starting to available, uh, so those, uh, personally down in the county, ethical park community, those are, um.
That's the one that we've got.
Yes, right, we've got thirty-five thousand dollars to be accounted for.
Well, yeah, we worked in for that, we worked on that. We worked to test it.
Right.
And apparently was used, all of it, our town used it, they got a grant. And it wasn't for creative planning, it was for, it was for something in the flood zone, to mitigate some of the damage. That's what, that's what they told me. I, I'm not, but, no, the person who got the grant, yeah.
I would, they have another round of funding, I would.
Yeah. Well.
I've never heard of a grant.
To try, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, uh.
I mean, all they can say now, you know.
You already got your money.
We haven't.
Aras, Aras Windham, you know, Tom White would probably be happy to tell you, but, or whoever's on their plan, you know, but.
Well, apparently they got it like, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think it was two years, they're, they're, they ended that process, they just released the draft. And I was like, I thought it's gonna be on our agenda for this month.
Okay, so this opens up.
Well, they didn't, I, um, it's supposed to open this fall, it's supposed to be around the funding this fall. As soon as I hear, um, of the funding, you know, uh, I will let everybody know. I mean, some of these state grants can be, you know, they're, they're often reporting and paperwork behind them, uh, can be a lot.
And that's a hard word to talk about.
Yeah, exactly.
But we did get one, apparently, that's what she said, she said we got one of the four, but because of that, they said no. But, I should verify.
Well, maybe for the same thing, unless we're.
No, it was just, it had to do with the drainage flooding.
I'm not sure, I've never heard that word.
We did get a few grants for. Little pocket park.
Okay, root step farms.
Okay. So, um, okay. So the referrals, there's two referrals on the agenda for tonight, this is, uh, town of Catskill. It is for a, a site plan review on a specially used permit on Emboff Road in Catskill. Uh, it is A seventy-five plus acre parcel, no rural agriculture, uh, with part of it, um. Waterfront overlay district, uh, it is in the agricultural district, um. And basically what they're doing is kind of a mixed use, there's the plan here, I'm on the table, but I also have the map up here. Uh, this is the actual site, and you can see this slide, but, um, it is, uh, this is. Nine W over here, so, and, and, and the, and the river, this is the village up here, it was the Catskill Creek, so it's kind of direct, direct us out of the village. It is, uh, in the Ag District, surrounded by Ag District parcels. It does have, uh, it is prime farmland, and it also has soils of statewide importance. And basically, I wanna do a mixed use, this is, I don't know how well you can see that, um, maybe, um. I don't know if that helps, um, at all.
Yes.
Basically.
It helps a lot.
There are re-existing buildings on the site up here where I am, my arrow is, you can see my arrow. Re-existing buildings which have, uh, which we just put in last year, um, they don't even show up on, um, any original photos. Any, uh, any, um, aerial photos yet, uh, and with a septic. There's a pole barn that is here where my arrow is, and they wanna add three farmhouse residents here down, um, in the lower portion of the site here. The entrances off of Emboff Road here, um, and then, um, the uses, they wanna put in a bakery. An educational classroom, because my understanding, uh, adjacent property of the Montessori School, uh, and a classroom for the Montessori School. And, and third one. Uh, just, uh, for, well, classroom, and all for manufacturing, that's what they need specially used for, they want to manufacture furniture and, um. Loudspeakers, and my understanding, they used to do it right here in the village, this, uh, the owner used to do this manufacturing, but needed a bigger site. So, um, there'd be manufacturing, a classroom, and a bakery, three of these buildings. So somewhat different uses, as well as residential use down three, basically tiny houses, they're like five hundred and seventy square foot. Five hundred and fifty squares for those farm residences and simple home residences. And they're inserted, just in septic, in a septic system down there. So, um, that is, what else? They did the Ag Day, Ag Day Statement, which you may have received the balloon, which I, that we asked to do, so that was good, and they contacted all agencies. Ag District, parcels, property owners, um. And they, being in the waterfront, uh, overlay district, they have to do a, uh, local waterfront program, revitalization program, uh, consistency. Our state consistency review. They did not submit that, that would be my only comment, it would be good to see a, a consistency review, um, with this. But other than that, um, I like the project. Project, um, it does require, like I said, special use, manufacturing is an allowed special use in this zone, under the zoning code. So the manufacturing shouldn't be an issue, especially if it's, I might say, use it is allowed, allowed special use. And, oh, here's the map, this is a little, um. I zoomed in for those online, well, I tried to zoom in for those three buildings. Three, so, oh, there is parking, they have some thirty-two total parking spaces. And, uh. Three ADA, so, uh, twenty-four of those spaces, um, are at the, the three buildings, and they have. Spaces at, for the housing, and spaces at the pole barn, the pole barn is gonna be used for, um, sorting produce. We're standing there, I'm trying to also do some kind of CSA in terms of, you know, in the ground there. So, um. That'll be public bathrooms and the classroom, um, and in, uh, the lot in the basement. So that's, uh. Oh, this is, if you want, this is what the farm housing would look like. That's a depiction of a farmhouse with a basement, that's underneath the area, basement, oh, that's an elevation, which might not be seen.
Doesn't look very farmhousey.
Uh, no, no, it's your, it's your modern tiny farmhouse. Yeah, it's a, you're five hundred and fifty square feet, basically a tiny home. Three of those. Right.
You got good families.
You are allowed to be a single farmer, you're not, you're a married farmer, having children.
Why are those existing buildings?
The, the, the three buildings that, that are on the, those three, um.
Yeah, what are they?
Pretty, pretty just, what do you mean, what are they, they don't have uses right now, they're pretty.
Oh, okay. But they're, they're looking at. But they're, they're looking at. Oh.
One of them will be.
See, this one says fabrication and manufacturing agriculture. Then one is the classroom and one is commercial kitchen.
Right.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that, I thought that.
Yeah.
Existing or to remain of this.
Well, they are, they're.
The repurposed, the repurposing.
Well, they built them without a use, they built them last year and have a use. My understanding, the new buildings. We're not showing up on any aerial photos at this point. Just built last year. And use for anything. So those are all some comments, the only comment I had. It was, you know, would have been just to complete the referral, it'd be good to see that the consistency review. I'm surprised they didn't do that before. And there's wetlands and stream encroachment, and they did, whether they even stayed or not before permits, they might. The recommendation was local decision with the. Or we could approve with it.
I would make much of a referral. I'll second that. That was Kylie.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstaining or review? Uh, next. Is. Just expansion of an existing restaurant and renaming of it. It's a. Formerly known as the Chalet Fondue in Wyndham. And they're expanding it right now, they're now in a footprint of fifty-one hundred square feet. It's planning the nineteen ninety's brought to the. Then there's, then there's first to be basically any kitchen and a bar. It's a couple of houses because it's right, it's on Stay Room ninety, two ninety six right here. Also, this is probably new swell. So kind of. Down the highway and. But it is really, the evening grass saved to be off of ninety two ninety six anyway. But it's close to the county road, so. But that's the easy basis for us. This is, I'll try to, just a little wider for. So here's two ninety six, here's county room twelve, it's an existing building. They want to put a proposed bar here and adding a kitchen here, adding parking. It's an ingress, ingress, there's a little. Two ninety six coming in here. There's only no county impact, so the recommendation was no county impact, local decision. They'll need to get, after doing any road work, again, I assume they know this, that they'll need to stay highway or whatever. But other than that, the recommendation is no county impact, local decision. Another thing I didn't receive, which I tried to get in touch with Tom, just he didn't submit a referral form, which I'd like to be able to have that for our record, so. Just want to remind people that you need to refer a form. As well, make sure you complete that referral form. So that is the recommendation, no county impact, local decision.
I think the motion.
Jen has moved it.
I'll second it, Jim.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Staying in the shoes, I just.
Okay.
So that's, that's it. There's no other business that I have. I will forward this slate of planning achievement awards and, you know, work for that. Other than that, the next meeting is, I think, October twentieth, it's the third Wednesday. I'll probably be doing the same format, I would assume, hybrid of in person and Zoom. So people can choose which format they wish. So is any motion to.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, you've got lots of seconds and thirds, okay, we're good. All right, all in favor?